It's on the road by 7. And call this meeting the Oskaloosa Council to Order. Today is October 6, 2014. Why don't we start with the invocation by Pastor Elizabeth Colton, St. Paul Congregational United Church of Christ.
Let us pray. Holy and loving God, by whatever name we call you, we seek your wisdom and guidance this evening for our city officials as they wrestle with the issues that come before them and then make decisions that affect the citizens of Oskaloosa. Remind us all that change is constant and often for the best, even though at times we fear what that change might mean. We ask you to help our city government address the challenges of the future and move boldly into it, even when the way forward is not always clear. We pray in the name of all that is holy. Amen.
Charlie, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Caliguri?
Here.
Jimenez?
Here.
Moore?
Here.
Van Zetten?
Yes.
Versteg?
Here.
Walling?
Here.
Yates?
Here.
Okay, thank you. Next item on the agenda is, one of my pleasures is to swear in a new police officer, Brandon Blanchard. The Police Department completed the necessary work to fill the vacancy. Brandon Blanchard is the newest Oskaloosa Police Officer. In the fall of 2012, Brandon became the first William Penn intern to work for the Police Department. Brandon was hired as the Community Service Officer in November 2013 and began his position as Police Officer in September of 2014. Brandon is a native of St. Louis, Missouri, graduating from William Penn University with a bachelor's degree in sociology. He was on the wrestling squad for four years at William Penn University and is also a volunteer at William Penn and at community youth wrestling camps. And so at this time, Brandon, would you please come forward? Raise your right hand. I, Brandon Blanchard.
I, Brandon Blanchard.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and comply with.
That I will support and comply with.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution and laws of the state of Iowa.
The Constitution and laws of the state of Iowa.
The Charter, laws, and ordinances of the city of Oskaloosa.
The Charter, laws, and ordinances of the city of Oskaloosa.
The rules and regulations of the Oskaloosa Police Department.
The rules and regulations of the Oskaloosa Police Department.
The law enforcement code of ethics.
The law enforcement code of ethics.
And I will faithfully and impartially.
And I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge the duties of my position as Police Officer.
Discharge the duties as my position Police Officer.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my abilities.
Well done. Welcome aboard, Brandon. Got to have you sign something. We have the oath of office here that you need to sign on that top line. And then I've got a signature below. And I believe the newspaper is here for a picture as well. All good? Very good. Moving on. Community comments. This is an item that's reserved to receive comments from the community for concerns whether or not they're included in the current agenda. The community is encouraged to come and speak before the mayor and city council. Ask to keep statements brief. Time shall be limited to no more than three minutes. Any questions that are to be asked of the city staff, council members, or the mayor, we ask that that be done prior to meeting as a full council, so that way any concerns can be properly researched and answered away from the meeting. Comments are to be directed to the mayor and city council only. Is there anyone who would care to speak at this time? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. These are items that are typically non-controversial in nature, and so they're all put together as one group. I would draw your attention that Item E is to consider a resolution scheduling a public hearing for November 3 to consider levying a special assessment against private property for weed cutting. And also Item F, where we're doing a resolution approving the deed and authorizing the sale of 120-foot by 16 and 1/2-foot of the north-south alley and 51 and 1/2-foot by 16 and 1/2-foot of the east-west alley that's adjacent to 701 High Avenue West. Do we have a motion for approval of the consent agenda?
I have one second.
Okay, and discussion?
I have one question. On one of the claims that we're paying, it was payment to Four Seasons for the yard mowing service or lawn mowing service. I guess I just questioning how that's went this summer overall. I know we had some questions about doing that and contracting and all of that sort of stuff. I'm just curious, Michael, how it went in general from your perspective?
Generally speaking, the feedback has been positive. I know we ran into a little bit of issues early on, just trying to make sure that we understood how they were going to perform. They knew what our expectations were. But once we got that resolved, I think we're on a good schedule now, and it's worked out well, to the point that I think we would like to talk about an extension of the contract going forward.
I have a couple of questions.
You bet.
What is D-Tim's maintenance?
Councilman Walling, that's the pavement management software that the engineering department or division uses.
Software? Thank you. Do we really have a tractor that's that old?
Yes. Yes.
Really? And we're fixing it. 1985 or something, or 19... No. It was 60 years old or something.
Yes.
I thought that was one of the ones that was going on the sale maybe, but obviously not.
Not yet.
Thank you.
Not until it becomes old.
Yeah.
We like to make everything antique here.
Other comments or questions? Roll call, please.
Walling?
Yes.
Yates?
Yes.
Caliguri?
Yes.
Jimenez?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Van Zetten?
Yes.
Versteg?
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Item number seven is the announcement of various vacancies we have on boards and commissions. Item A is the Building Code Board of Appeals. Two vacancies to fill, and that's upon appointment to serve at the pleasure of the mayor. It's a five-member board that meets as needed. Currently, we have three males serving with two vacancies. The Board of Adjustment, one vacancy to fill upon appointment for an unexpired term ending on April 30 of 2017. It's a five-member board that meets as needed on the 4th Tuesday of the month. Currently, we have four males serving with the one vacancy. And the Mahaska County Solid Waste Management Commission and Ad-Hoc Recycling Committee. Five vacancies to fill to serve one-year terms starting on January 1, 2015, through December 31 of 2015. Two members of the commission also serve on the Ad-Hoc Recycling Committee. This is a five-member board that typically meets once a month. We have three males and one female currently serving with one vacancy. Getting into the regular agenda. Item A, this is a public hearing section. This is to consider a resolution levying a special assessment against private property for the repair of a sewer located at 407 Fourth Avenue East. This is done in accordance with Sections 13.08.50 of the City Code in the city of Oskaloosa. So this is the time for the public hearing on levying a special assessment against the property owned by Jennifer Wise Schucher, located at 407 Fourth Avenue East in Oskaloosa for an emergency sewer repair. Certified notice of the hearing was sent to the property owner. Notice of hearing was published in the Oskaloosa Herald prior to the public hearing date. So if approved, the property owner would have 30 days to pay for the repairs in the city clerk's office, and then after 30 days, it would be assessed in property taxes with a payment schedule of 15 years, 9% interest. Okay? So I'll open the public hearing at this time. Is there anyone who would care to speak to this item? Okay, seeing none, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. I don't believe we had any written or other correspondence on this. So do we have a motion supporting the levying of a special assessment against 407 Fourth Avenue East?
So move.
And discussion? Roll call, please.
Yates?
Yes.
Caliguri?
Yes.
Jimenez?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Van Zetten?
Yes.
Versteg?
Yes.
Walling?
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Item B is to consider a motion directing the city manager to complete sidewalk improvements along Edmondson Drive. On August 18, 2014, city council considered a motion amending a site plan for Tuscany Village that excluded the building of a sidewalk on the property. The motion failed, thus requiring the developer to install sidewalks in Tuscany Village as shown on the site plan. A representative for the Tuscany Village Homeowners Association voiced concerns that if the sidewalks were installed, they should be connected to the parking lot serving the Edmondson Park Wooden Playground. Based on that input and other discussion, council determined that the item should go to a committee for further discussion and evaluation. And so the committee of council, made up of council members Yates, Jimenez, and Versteg, came to consensus that the city should move forward with installing sidewalks north from Tuscany Village to the west entrance of the park. Staff recommended that the city also consider adding sidewalk improvements to the south of Tuscany Village to the clubhouse or parking lot of the golf course, as well as on 15th Avenue West, where there's a gap of about 170 feet. The design and engineering of the project would be handled in-house. The current estimate does not reflect improvements on 15th Avenue West that would help connect the neighborhood on Westfield Drive to Edmondson Park or improvements south of Tuscany Village. Estimated cost of the project, $13,300. So do we have a motion supporting this?
Second.
Okay, discussion?
So it's going to be a different issue about finishing the other sidewalks, is that what I understand there?
That's correct.
Yeah, thank you.
Well, this resolution is to do the other sections, is that correct?
No.
I'm misunderstanding that.
That's why I'm asking, because there's no amount.
Okay, so this is just for the...
Okay.
Just this piece.
As presented, it's just that one section.
Okay. Any further comments or questions? Roll call, please.
Caliguri?
Yes.
Jimenez?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Van Zetten?
Yes.
Versteg?
Yes.
Walling?
Yes.
Yates?
Yes.
Caliguri?
Yes.
Jimenez?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Van Zetten?
Yes.
Versteg?
Yes.
Walling?
Yes.
Yates?
Yes.
Caliguri?
Yes.
Jimenez?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Van Zetten?
Yes.
Versteg?
Yes.
Walling?
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Any further comments or questions? Roll call, please.
Caliguri?
Yes.
Jimenez?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Van Zetten?
Yes.
Versteg?
Yes.
Walling?
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Any further comments or questions? Roll call, please.
Caliguri?
Yes.
Jimenez?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Van Zetten?
Yes.
Versteg?
Yes.
Walling?
Yes.
Yates?
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Moving on to Item C. This is to consider a motion to reconsider an ordinance amending the city's electric franchise agreement with Mid-American Energy Company, increasing the existing electric franchise fees by an additional 2% of the company's gross revenues for all service classes. So at the September 15, 2014 meeting of city council, the proposed ordinance to amend the electric franchise agreement was presented for its third and final reading. That item failed to pass by a vote of three yes, which was Caliguri, Jimenez, and Yates, and four no, Moore, Van Zetten, Versteg, and Walling. Councilmember Moore and I have both expressed interest in having this item brought forward for city council reconsideration. Procedurally, a member of the prevailing side of the last vote for this item must be the one to initiate the action. In addition, the mayor, I, provide input to the city manager on setting the council agenda. In Oskaloosa Municipal Code Section 4.3(c), and I indicated a desire to support council member's more request to have this item on the agenda. If it's approved, the city council will reconsider amending the franchise agreement for electricity, as well as an increase to the existing franchise fee. However, the process will have to start anew, and a tentative timeline is provided below. So October 6 is the motion to reconsider, and then there's the same for the natural gas. October 20 would be when we start the process, with Item 1 being the consideration of a resolution scheduling the public hearing for the ordinance increasing the fees on both in electric and gas. November 3 would be the public hearing, consideration with the first reading of both gas and electric. November 17 would be the second reading, and then December 1 would be the final reading. Do we have a motion supporting this?
Second.
Okay, discussion?
Mayor, and one of the things that's not included in this is if the council does in fact agree to reconsider the item, a public hearing also must be held on the revenue purpose statement. So that topic of discussion would come up again for council discussion and debate and vote.
My revenue purpose statement could change as far as the wording?
Yes.
So we can take economic development out of there?
If the council wanted to do that, certainly.
Really ought to be doing that first. But...
That's the only way I could support it, if that's taken out, maybe a few other things taken out. The money is supposed to be for streets, infrastructure, this sort of thing. That's the way I'm...
On the original, is that correct? Yeah.
That's the first one a few years back.
Right.
And, Michael, did it not really change the last time we did it because we didn't implement the change in the franchise fee, or do we still have the old one in place, or the original in place?
We have the amended version.
So the new one is in place?
Which includes roads, yeah, all the public safety roads, economic development.
Okay, so the new one's in place, but because we're starting this, it has to be considered anew?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. That's actually stated in the state code.
Okay.
It's going to take a while, but somewhere in this length of time, are we going to look at the cost-saving possible measures that we've talked about?
Yeah, budget issues, is that what you're referring to?
To be, that's part of this discussion.
Well, I don't see why not.
Well, I don't either. Thank you.
It's just something that you feel we can do at a committee level, though, as opposed to involve...
Mayor, I'll leave that up to you. I'm just saying that discussion needs to happen because it's affecting the vote, as you know.
From my perspective, I guess I'm trying to understand what is it that you'd like to look at, because obviously, in the process of having the staff look forward a few years, we try to give them an opportunity to say, okay, in the event that we don't have the revenue that's necessary.
That's what I understand.
These are the things that could occur. But during the work sessions, the study session that we held on this, I presented to you some items that there was clear consensus on that we wouldn't continue to do, which specifically was the A-Avenue corridor. We wouldn't spend any money there. We reversed the purchase or the acquisition of the Five Star Realty Building, and the part-time code enforcement position was essentially eliminated. So I guess those were the items that I thought, from my recommendation, would be the items that would be reduced from the budget. The other items are not my recommendation, but I still think, yes, long-term, we need to talk about potential service provision options, but I guess I'm not... I never expected us to say, yes, we're going to cut everything.
I didn't either. All I'm following up is on, everything you said was true the way I remember it, but you did mention that you were having the departments look at possibilities, and I just thought we would see those possibilities as discussion. Nothing, you know, concrete.
Yes, we had discussion about staffing cuts and taking a serious look at that.
Well, Mike has asked them to make lists, right? Did I understand you wrong on that?
I've asked for ways to look at revenue enhancements, as well as providing services differently, and it may not always result in a decrease. I think that's just what you try to do long-term when you think you're projecting a potential revenue shortfall. But I also thought that if, in fact, based on the direction that it was potentially heading, if the franchise fee was going to go forward, the potential delta between the revenue and our expenditures was going to be significantly different. And so some of the measures that were presented to you might be enough to cover the shortfall. But again, that's things that we would still need to talk about, but...
That was my point.
Yeah, that's how I saw it, and then the vote went down the way it did. So I'm always willing to talk about priorities that this council has for how the taxpayers' money is going to be spent, and I think that's a good thing to continue to have those discussions.
So in the event that we don't move forward with this increase, would there necessarily be cuts, then?
No. I don't think this year there would be, or even next year, there would be a need for cuts, because the impact was fairly minimal. We'll see that here soon, but I think what's really... The kicker for us will be in fiscal year 17, when the new classification is rolled out, the multifamily, and that's when we'll get to see the true impact of what the legislature did to the cities. Obviously, I'd like to have a plan in place before that, but I think we'll be all right for the first couple of years.
But is it also clear that while there wouldn't be cuts, some of the other requests that have been brought before us will not be able to be funded?
That's correct. I think the idea behind the franchise fee was in the short term, it provides the council with the most flexibility to make decisions, not only for the operations of what we do on a day-to-day basis, but also those requests that were coming. Long-term, I still think we need the franchise fee.
We haven't even talked about what requests we're even going to move forward, on where we stand with it. I mean, the whole thing on this was to get the why funded. That's why we pushed through this economic development, to get them so we can have that as an option, and we haven't even yet talked as a group of where we stand with that.
At this point, I would remind the council that what we're talking about is a motion to reconsider an ordinance.
Yeah, nothing else, right?
Right. Any other comments or questions?
Well, before we vote on this, can you understand something? The revenue purpose statement, it has to be worded before the public hearing?
It would be part of the public hearing that you would have on November 3.
Right. So you're going to change the wording, then? Is that my understanding, or is it going to be worded just like the last one was?
The way I do is I'd present it... How it happens is, first time it was created, we had to... I presented all the menu options that were available to you by state code, so the legislature says these are legally permissible uses. So the first time it was presented, very, very first time, I presented all of them and said, here were my recommendations. I believe one or two of those items were approved, and that was infrastructure only. My recommendation was to include economic development and public safety at that point. Again, to provide the council and the city the maximum flexibility in case things change. We didn't know that this tax reform was coming through back then, and here we are. So the council approved it with just infrastructure only. So when I brought it back, because the franchise fees were being discussed again, I presented what we had, what was approved at that point, and then I said, here's what you can do. And then through that discussion, public safety was added, as well as economic development. So this time around, I'd present all the options again to you, what we have current, and then you, US council, can discuss and debate the merits of each of those.
Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Jimenez?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Van Zetten?
Yes.
Versteg?
Yes.
Walling?
Yes.
Yates?
Yes.
Caliguri?
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Okay, moving on. Item D, this is the motion to reconsider the ordinance amending the city's natural gas franchise agreement. All of the information I read earlier for the electric would be identical for the natural gas. Do we have a motion supporting it?
So move.
Okay, discussion? Roll call, please.
Moore?
Yes.
Van Zetten?
No.
Versteg?
Yes, to reconsider.
Yates?
Yes.
Caliguri?
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Okay, moving on. Item D, this is the motion to reconsider the ordinance amending the city's natural gas franchise agreement. All of the information I read earlier for the electric would be identical for the natural gas. Do we have a motion supporting it?
So move.
Okay, discussion? Roll call, please.
Moore?
Yes.
Van Zetten?
No.
Versteg?
Yes.
Walling?
Yes.
Yates?
Yes.
Caliguri?
Yes.
Jimenez?
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Okay, it's the end of the regular agenda. Reports on items from city staff. City manager, anything?
Yeah, Mayor and Council, I don't have it on here, and I apologize, I omitted it. With November 4 looming, US council referred an item to the voters for their consideration, and that was the potential issuance of bonds. And one of the things that I've been doing, the chief and I have been doing, excuse me, is that we've been out visiting with service clubs and providing public information. As you know, as staff, we can't lobby for or against a ballot item, just can't do that, but we can provide information or facts about the project. And so what we've done is we've run through this presentation. I won't go through the whole thing, but I'd just kind of give you the quick highlights of it. And we're going to hit all of the service clubs before the end of this month. I also handed out to you a project information sheet that we've had produced for this project. So what I do tell people is that the fire station as it is today, you can see on the left-hand side, that was when it was initially constructed, on the right-hand side is today. The bay doors are the same, but obviously, the methods of providing public safety has changed with technology. There's the facility in 1910. This was on our Facebook page not too long ago, and again, you can see there really hasn't been much change, obviously. Paved roads would be a big change, but also the buildings next door were demolished and City Hall wasn't added on above and into the west. We talked briefly about the history, tried to remind people about, you know, while a facility that's been taken care of is great, it may not always be adequate and serve the current needs of the city. And so we talk about the fact that this current facility does not have ADA accessibility. There really isn't any opportunities for growth or accommodation of any changes in the technology beyond what we see. So if we need a larger piece of equipment, like a ladder truck, pumper truck, we may be out of space and can't necessarily pull that vehicle into the bays. demolition, and that occurred in 2013. So that building that was housing that equipment was acquired specifically to hold equipment. Now it's gone. So now we've sent pieces of equipment in other places that the fire department, if they in fact need to utilize it, have to go someplace else to access it. Not necessarily the most efficient operation, but that's what we're doing today. The council, as you know, during this discussion, there was, okay, what are we going to do? And the study was initiated with Rohrbach and Associates, the architect. They did a facilities assessment or a needs assessment of the department, came up with options. There was a year, year and a half of discussion and debate about onsite, offsite, the architecture of the building, and receiving input from the public. And that was done through focus groups, cross-section of boards and commissions that are of the city, and just members of the public. And they provided you the feedback to keep the facility here. It's important to have it centralized, and as a group, you listened to that feedback. You also discussed possibilities of how to fund the fire station, and we went from, hey, let's just pay for cash. We looked at using tax increment financing, but ultimately, I believe, I can say this safely, that all of you thought it was important to hear from the voters directly. And that's why you've decided to have the voters consider approval or denial of that question, which is, shall the city be able to issue $3.195 million, not to exceed, for the construction renovation expansion of the facility? Obviously, that is what the facility would look like. That's the architect's rendering of it. And the scope is, it's a 16,000-square-foot facility remodel and expansion, and you can see how it's broken out there. I don't need to necessarily remind you, but the highlights are, the new portion of the facility would accommodate the equipment, offices, storage rooms, and accommodate space for the emergency management, which is in the county law enforcement center today. It also has a conference room. So it really takes something that we don't have today and puts it on the ground floor. So adequate, brand-new facility. The first floor, just minor rehab work, but what we're doing is we're taking the concrete floor and essentially modernizing it from no longer being for horses to heavy equipment of today. And so we'd lay a new concrete floor, potentially heat that as well. The second floor and the third floor, that's where you see a lot of the major remodel work. The second floor has been remodeled recently with the bathroom, but there was never a real comprehensive look at, hey, how does this lay out? Is it efficient? Does it meet the needs of firefighting services today and tomorrow? And I can safely say the answer is no. It doesn't... It's not reflective of what you'd see in most facilities. So our firefighters are presently in a very dated... It works, but it's very dated as far as the kitchen. The sleeping quarters are not what you'd see in a traditional sleeping quarter arrangement. You have bunks or beds that are in the workout room. They're also in the day room. It's just not... It's not a good private facility. It's not, again, not what you'd see today. So that would be addressed. We don't have ADA accessibility in the facility. That would be addressed through the remodel. And the restrooms, we don't have necessarily separate showering restroom facilities for male or females, and we do have females on reserve. So we have a potential issue there, which would be rectified with this remodel. The third floor would accommodate a training room or community room, would be used by the emergency management, EMA director or coordinator, also be used by the fire department. It could be rented by the public and would be a space that US council or anybody could use. And I would say, one of the things that I've noticed is, meeting space is desperately needed in this community. It's hard to find a large space that can accommodate enough people in a professional setting, so this could do that. Important to a lot of people is, okay, so how is this funded? What's it really going to cost me? What's the impact? And in the literature that we have out there, the frequently asked questions, we have to say to people that if the voters do approve this, yes, it will result in a tax increase. Now, you're all going to look at me like, what are you talking about? The gray line shows on the left-hand side of that chart, as it goes down, this is the history. So that's what we've paid historically. Then as you go through the blue line, that's if we did nothing. That's if the community says, no, US council, don't issue any more debt. Well, yeah, it's going to drop. And so any new issuance of debt is obviously going to create a tax. So what we're saying is that, while yes, this would result in a 92 cents per thousand assessed value increase, it's a replacement tax. What we're saying is, we're at a point now as a community, if you look at where the gray line, the blue line, and the orange line converge, then they separate. It's kind of the fork in the road. The community can vote yes and extend the tax, and it'll still be at what it is today or close to the rate of what it is today. And actually, it decreases. Or we can say no, and then we continue to pay off debt quite quickly. The average impact for a property owner is just over $3 per month. They have it, and again, in an average home in Oskaloosa, which is assessed at around $80,000. So just under $40 per year is what you're looking at if the voters say yes. That would be extended for 15 years, and even with that type of bond issuance, the city has a really, really low debts or debt load. We have very little debt. Our auditors will talk about that when they come to you next month. Interest rates are extremely low. We've talked about it for five years now. It's a good time to borrow money, and when you can get rates anywhere from 2.5% to 4%, that's pretty good. And that was, again, one of the compelling reasons why you wouldn't pay cash for this, because inflation could outpace the borrowing capabilities here. So we show the people that, and then we just give them a quick overview of how this would lay out. Again, that's where the water department building was, and here's how it lays out. And then we go through the floor plans, not in too much detail because that's boring, and then we just show the pretty pictures of what the facility might look like. And then we talk about the project timeframe. When would this get done? If the voters say yes in November, how quickly could we have a new facility? Not very quickly, October of 2016. So it'll take a little bit to get it done. The Gantt chart here shows you, everything that's not in red, that's kind of the design process, that's the review process, bidding, and then once we get to the red-colored or orange-colored, depending on which screen you're looking at, that's the construction period. And they do overlap a little bit, and that'll be something that Mark and the staff would have to deal with, but I think they would be very happy to be dealing with that type of problem if the voters did say yes. That's what I'm giving a presentation on. Chief and I are doing that over the next month, and if you have any questions, you can certainly see us about it.
Refresh my memory, Michael, on the old water building...
Yeah.
Showed the print up there. How much of the space was used by the fire department versus how much, in rough numbers, by the water department?
Some square footage.
I can't really see where it cuts off.
Yeah. I don't recall the numbers, but...
That's the water department there?
Yes, correct.
So maybe a third was water department, two-thirds? And do we know what that square footage was?
Real close to the square footage of what we're at on the at work.
Okay.
So 7,000?
The new at work, if the new station would be just a little bit bigger.
There was at least three trucks in there, right, Chief?
Yes, yeah.
Thanks, Chief.
Hard to see that on that picture. So that's all I have.
Okay. Thank you, Mike.
I guess just one other quick thing. You sent us a frequently asked question.
Yes.
Which I thought was very good, and I appreciated that. Handing that out at any of those meetings, I think would be valuable as well, from my perspective.
Yeah, and that's what we're handing out. I've been, depending on the size of the service club, I'll provide them a copy of the presentation at one of those handouts and FAQ, the frequently asked question sheet.
City clerk, anything?
No, sir.
City attorney, anything?
No, thank you.
Okay. City council members, Joe, anything? Aaron? Scotty?
No, thank you.
Tom?
Nothing, sure.
We got, or in our package, excuse me, we got minutes from the regional airport, which is great, but the Colonel wasn't there, but I realize it just happened. But what I'm really headed is, are there more detailed minutes? You know, like what Jerry Searle has to say, and not online or anywhere?
No, the minutes that you receive are the minutes that are...
Okay, so, because I've been trying to go to most of those meetings, I missed a couple,